Sir.
Okay, we'll let Vicki take over.
I want to make sure I'm in a right spot.
All right. All right. All immediate orders, everybody can rise to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Keep up. Keep it together. Yeah, roll call, madam auditor.
Yes, Councilmember Reva.
I am here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Paparid.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Witten.
Larson and Witten are on their way, they're a little bit behind, about ten minutes. Um, so maybe we can get through the minutes in the first reading and then we'll let Vicki give her presentation. You guys want to do that?
Uh, good.
Do we have the minutes in front of us?
I'll make a motion.
For June twenty-third, is the motion...
Second.
Motion to second to approve the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty minutes, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Vicki, can we get first reading real quick?
Notes to taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations, others are by giving the taxpayer support of county Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet the Porter County government administration building located one six five Indiana as we operate for Indiana. On July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M, consider the following appropriations of Justice D. T. Johnson, for the year twenty twenty, and to transact any further business which might come before the conference. General fund, the sheriff garage, small pool, uh, one thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars in taxes, accident report fund, eleven oh one, motor vehicles, thirty thousand dollars, Seymour the bridge fund, eleven thirty-five, turning other than office plot at five hundred, stormwater fund, eleven eighty-two, turning other than office plot five hundred dollars, E nine one one fund, twelve twenty-two, other equipment, eighty thousand seven ninety-two point thirty-eight, adult probation C P S fund, twenty-one oh three, a reduction of twenty-four thousand six fifteen in salary, cable franchise fund, forty-nine oh six, roads and taxi lights, three hundred thousand, E N S permission grant fund, beginning three hundred contractual, nine thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars in insurance, COVID, M O H I A C eighty-nine oh one, other services, three thousand, adult probation community correction C P S grant fund, ninety-one sixty-four, a total of thirty-nine thousand five ninety-seven point forty-three. Tax payers appearing at such meaning shall have a right to be heard thereon, the appropriation of the judgment they have finally made, will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance. Where applicable, the D O J will make a written determination as to the provision of funds to support the appropriations made. Thank you, Vicky Vance, auditor, report published July seventeen, the judge.
Okay, well, thank you. We're gonna move around here a little bit, um, give Jeff and Dan a little time here. Vicki is going to give a presentation on her GAAP report that she's been working on and saving the county a few dollars in doing so.
I'm gonna...
The floor is all yours.
Okay. I'm gonna stand over here so I can see the slide. Okay, well, thank you councilmembers for giving us this opportunity to give you a relatively brief, um, presentation on a really exciting new project that has begun in the county auditor's office. Uh, with us tonight are two people you know, Tony Dunn, Chief Deputy, and Tiffany Johnson, Budget and Finance Director. Tony, Tiffany, and myself were the main members of the project team. This project consists of an annual financial report, but it's very exciting, believe me. Um, it's a type of report that we are not used to preparing. It's a type of report that the vast majority of local government units in Indiana do not prepare. It follows generally accepted accounting principles for GAAP for short, and as the name implies, GAAP stands for Principles That Help Guide Us, Gives Us Consistency in How Best to Present Our Financial Information. GAAP standards exist throughout the country and throughout the world for businesses, tax, uh, tax exempt organizations, as well as state and local governments. But Indiana is one of the states that has not required GAAP reports for local government units. And as a result of that, majority of counties and other taxing units do not prepare GAAP reports because quite frankly, they're very complex and they take a lot of time and energy to put together. Now, a few years ago though, state lawmakers passed legislation that is essentially requiring larger counties, counties of our size and other larger taxing units, to begin preparing GAAP reports in order to take on any more debt. So if, in the future, the county wants to issue a bond issue, you would not be able to unless we have GAAP statements prepared. So what I was hoping to do is just take a quick look at the type of report that you're probably all used to seeing. Um, every year, we submit an annual financial report following what we call a regulatory basis of accounting. It's basically the rules that the states help us follow. We submit it on the state paperwork side. Now, the next slide is going to show you the sort of summary sheet that gives you a whole slew of good information about our funds, beginning balances and end balances. Now, let's zero in on the general fund. If you look at that last one, you'll see that the end of the year is seven point one million in the general fund. And you might say, we must have done something well, something good, because look at it's more than what we began the year with. We kept spending under control, and I would agree.
Thank you.
But what if I were to tell you that in December, we had bills that we knew about that totaled about a million dollars, but we didn't pay them yet? You might say, well, isn't it a little bit misleading to say we ended the year with seven point one if you were gonna turn around and pay out a million dollars? I'd say yes, but let's think about the two point five million that we billed other people. We just haven't gotten that money yet, but we're legally allowed, like all the late tax things are just coming to the general fund. Once I were to tell you that, you would get a much more comprehensive understanding of a true state of our general fund. It's more complex, it's not as straightforward, but it's more accurate. Now, what I just described to you, known bills that we haven't paid yet, known revenue coming in and break out of the receipt, those are two of the basic, uh, components of a balance sheet. Now, who here has never heard the term balance sheet? Everyone has heard the term balance sheet, right? But we will not find a balance sheet in our financial report up until now. They don't exist in that type of a report. We don't have accounting balance sheets, but you will find it in a GAAP report. You'll find many balance sheets, you'll find a lot more. So now, let's go to a very brief recording, we're not gonna delve down on any details, we're gonna zoom through this. Um, this is the GAAP report that we submitted to the state for audit, and it is already being audited. So we know that some of the things are going to be changing. So, but this is just a general overview. Now, for those of you who own stock in companies, you probably have access to your company's annual financial report. Those follow GAAP. So some of the stuff you're going to see will seem a little familiar. Now, after a few introductory pages, we get to M D and A, management discussion and analysis, and this is actually the, one of the most fun parts of the project because we get to talk in layman's terms about, why don't you say that, that's a really good one. I'm real proud of some of the pie charts and tables that we came up with. We get to talk in general terms about the financial situation of that county. Um, the next section deals with our financial statement, and we're going to look first at what's called a government-wide, uh, statement of net positions. This is essentially a balance sheet. And I just want to point out a couple things. If you look at the assets section, you'll see that our county's greatest asset is the foundation holdings. Now, we can't really access all of that, but the investments constitute, um, about a hundred and seventy-three million dollars of assets. The next biggest chunk of assets that we have in Porter County are our buildings, our lands, our roads, our bridges, our equipment. It's in capital assets, we're reporting about a hundred and fifty-five million of capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation. Now, if you look at some liabilities, I just want to point out one to you, compensated expenses. We are required by the Government Accounting Standards Board to calculate all of the accrued vacation and comp time in county government. So basically, we determine that if all county employees, um, needed to be paid out their vacation and comp time as of December thirty-first of last year, we would be on the hook for a cash payment of just under a million dollars. So now, we're going to just, there's a lot more we can talk about, but we're not. We're going to just kind of breeze through all of this. We're going to get to another set of statements, it's the governmental funds, balance sheets, the income statements. Um, you'll see as we keep scrolling through that there's a really important page called the reconciliation, because we have to tell you, the readers, why this balance sheet differs from the prior balance sheet. And if we don't balance, we do not have a compliant GAAP report. Fortunately, we did balance. Now, we're just going to kind of zoom through, the next section is actually the second largest section of the report, it's called notes. Once again, any investors here, you know that notes are an integral part of the financial statement. These notes are, I think they're about sixty pages long, they are full of information that's court about county. If you want to find a detailed debt repayment schedule, if you want to find details about capital assets, about tax abatements, about encumbrances, you will find it in the notes. Now, we're just going to whiz through, all of these figures you see will have to be updated every year. Um, the next section, the next big section that we're coming to, is called R S I.
We'll shift.
And R S I is page after page after page of various tables that deal with pensions and O P A, and if we get to page ninety-five, we're going to stick there for just a second. Ninety-five is something that I think all of you are going to be pretty interested in. It is what's called the budget period comparison schedule, we have to tell, uh, what happens to certain budgets. So if you look at the first column, this is the general fund, the one that we tend to talk about in Porter County mostly, you, you, if you look at the bottom part, the expenditure part, you approved a budget of about forty point six million. Now, the next column shows how that budget changed during the course of the year, it actually grew to about forty-one point one million, and that was because of additional appropriations and encumbrances were the ones part. But the next column is fascinating because it tells you what really happened. Well, departments came into funding way under, uh, what was approved and what was adopted, uh, how it was changed during the year and what was adopted. And the revenue projections also came in higher than what was originally projected. That's a good place to be. And now, we're just gonna scroll through the rest of the report, the last section is actually the largest section, it's called O S I, and this is where, if you want to see any fund and their financial information converted into GAAP, here is where you're going to find it. This is where you'll find the details on departments like health department, stormwater, and moral upper house. It will show you your assets, your liabilities, your revenues, and your expenditure. And that is going to be the end of this report. I think I covered all hundred and ninety-five pages, uh, pretty accurately and thoroughly. I think this in closing wants to, um, talk about everything that you see here, every figure you saw, every word, every table, had to be researched, verified, calculated by one of us. Um, this is not something that you just spit out of a computer, this is a very labor-intensive report, and, um, it has, it came at a pretty challenging time when we were shut down for two and a half months, but we still did it, and this type of report is going to be here to stay going forward. So that concludes the GAAP report, and now I won't have to keep asking, when do you want to hear about it? If there's any questions.
Anybody got any questions?
I, I just want to say that I witnessed, uh, the, a lot of the work being done in the auditor's office, and thank you guys for all that you did. Uh, I know that was a very, very work-in-vent flying project, and thank you.
I got, I got one quick question, Vicki. Why do you figure depreciation? Because that's a tax issue and we don't pay taxes.
It's a GAAP thing.
But what do we...
We have to calculate appreciation expense on our capital assets while these are the ones that are being depreciated, like land that's not...
Right.
And so the value that we're showing is what we would call the book value.
Do you use industry standards for like buildings, twenty years, thirty years?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And that the co- county commissioners have, um, a new fixed asset policy last year that brought us into compliance, and we have a schedule of, uh, what's the estimated life for all of our different assets.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have a pretty involved fixed asset plan, and this has been going on for years. Um, but we are finding out that many counties have not been keeping track of their fixed assets that we took to calculate appreciation and all that, and so we were a little bit lunched up on how to do that on that one.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome to see our fixed assets, we're pretty proud of that.
You know, Vicki, I'd like to say that you and your team have always done a tremendous job, uh, in the work that you do, and, and we can't tell you how much, uh, we appreciate it. The, uh, but this is a good example of, uh, work that's above and beyond that regular work that you do. Um, and didn't have to be done, doesn't have to be explained, doesn't have to, you don't have to be enthusiastic about it, but you do, and so congratulations for going above and beyond the work that's required of your office, it's, it's great work.
Absolutely.
Are all counties submitting this, that they have to?
Uh, under the state legislation that was passed, um, in effect, seventeen Indiana counties, which to the best of our knowledge, three of them were already preparing GAAP statements. Those were Marion, Allen, and Hamilton. So then the other ones are also preparing, but other counties do not have them. At least not yet.
Do they do it in-house? No.
Based on what we have been told, all of the new ones are contracting out there. Um, the, and again, this is just based on our understanding. Um, we do know that Allen County does their project, but we believe they're the only one.
You, you had an estimate once before we talked about that, what that cost would be if you did that, do you remember what that was?
We heard ranges, um, I think it, it's fair to say anywhere from about seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Perfect, thank you. Vicki, Tiffany, Tony, thank you. All right, well, we'll get back to normal business. Everybody gotta stay where they're at. All right, so commissioners, of general fund. So, uh, four and one forty-four in front of us, sixteen dollars up to twenty-two dollars security guard hourly, I believe this is what we tabled last month. So, it's a retro, retroactive pay-to-one, I think this had to do with Joe over at the, um, North County Building.
Yes.
So...
I'll make a motion.
Second.
There's a motion to second on the floor for the one forty-four. Any further discussion?
If they want to move over here to space, we'll move out.
Can we get a roll call on the one forty-four? You guys, it's up to them, if they want to go back to normal proceeding.
Um, Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparid.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Seven to zero. Okay, you guys can space out.
Dan, you want to come over here where there's a microphone in the front of these...
Oh, no, they'll hear me.
All right, all right. Okay, we have a transfer, uh, fifteen thousand dollars from disposal to hourly, um, and fifteen thousand dollars from contractual to hourly. Reason funds are depleted due to more part-time employees needed and security at North County.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to second on both fifteen thousand dollar transfers. Any further discussion?
Now, is that, is that something, will that take us through the end of the year? Or is that just catching us up with what?
No, I, I think it'll take us to the end of the year. Uh, we had, uh, not only the security, but the extra help that we've needed out front for the, you know, for the testing as, as residents come in, uh, or citizens come in, and also, I believe, we had some additional maintenance because of some cleaning that we, you know, COVID-related cleaning that we've had to do in here as well. So that...
Ray, that should take us to the end of the year, shouldn't it?
Yes, it'll take me to the end of the year with the cushions.
Yeah. You know, barring something unusual that would happen, I mean, this would get worse where we had to, we had to leave this building, have it all cleaned, or another building, you know, I, I don't know, but...
Is that part of the CARES Act, are we getting refunded for some of that?
Uh, good question, Jeff, um, I don't know. It, uh, that's something we probably should look into though, if it, if it qualifies.
I think, um...
I think Vicki's keeping her running tally, and I think we can talk to the commissioners before, so I think, yes.
Vicki, you have all the departments turning in anything that's COVID-related to you, correct?
Yes.
I mean, there are restrictions on it, but I'm not, I'm not real sure what those restrictions are. But we'll, we'll look into that. We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay. Any further questions on the transfers? All right, um, all in favor of two transfers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That cable franchise, we got additional, three hundred thousand dollars, um, to roads and taxiways. Funds are depleted, the reason funds are depleted, the additional will come from end dot reimbursements.
I'll make a... Second.
Awesome.
We're trying to end.
Oh.
Any discussion?
Further discussion on the additional from cable franchise to roads and taxiways? No further discussion, we get a roll call?
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparid.
Yep.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, moving on, facilities. We've got a lit fund, a transfer fifty-four thousand dollars from building maintenance, supplies to hourly. Reason funds are depleted due to more part-time employees needed and security at North County, so...
Motion.
Second.
Kind of combined, it looks like we're kind of combining the two out of pain, same thing out of both.
Yeah, what we, what we did is took money out of my fund, took money out of their fund, put it together for what I needed for the rest of the year, and what they needed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you. E nine one one, statewide surcharge fund, an additional eighty thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars thirty-eight cents to other equipment. Reason, purchase and installation of bidirectional amplifier for the Porter County Courthouse and the Juvenile Detention Center.
Motion. No, oh, I'll second.
The motion to second on the additional, discussion? Actually, this, was this the one we approved last year, I think, already, one time?
Yeah, we just never finished it up.
Never finished it up, okay, so. All right, further discussion? We get a roll call on the additional?
Councilmember Paparid.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
All right, there's a transfer also, a hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and forty-six cents from salaries to other equipment.
More motion.
Second.
Motion to second. You guys can read the reasons, any further discussion?
Nice presentation the other day.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Didn't get a chance to get over there, take the tour. So there's a motion to second, no further discussion. All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good. Highway Department, we got a motor vehicle highway fund, a transfer eight thousand dollars from consultants to workers, workers' comp.
Second.
Cover the increase in workers' comp insurance. There's a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I think there's some, these are your projects, I think they were just passed out. So, anybody got any questions, these are what's going on, what the highway is doing in terms of...
Very good.
Roadwork this year?
That's not, that's not a clean, crack seal is, that's about thirty miles crack seal that we're gonna do too, so. Total more work will be about...
I can't hear.
Yeah. We got about eighty miles of...
Someone said, take your man.
There we go. We got about eighty miles total between crack seal, chip seal, and the paving and slurry seal. The, uh, one that's highlighted, um, is, uh, projects for this fall for C C M G, so. Hey, Rich, could you, just, just so the audience and so the newspapers get it, could you reiterate why we're chipping ceiling? Because we've had a couple people send some information in that we wanted to answer, and I just want to make sure that they understand why we do that, for longevity and so... When we chip and seal our asphalt pavement, it's a very cheap way of us to preserve the asphalt that's good there. It's a, not a worst-first approach, because if we took the worst-first approach, we'd always be behind, and we'd always be, we would never get ahead. We're starting with better roads and, uh, resurfacing with chip and seal, that's about eighteen thousand dollars. If we actually went in and paved the whole road, it's about a hundred and twenty-three thousand a mile versus eighteen thousand a mile. So even when we double grind and chip and seal road and make it all brand-new, it's thirty-eight thousand a mile versus paving a hundred and twenty-three thousand a mile. So chip and seals are easiest, we can get more miles out of it.
What's the, yeah, is it like six or seven years additional, isn't it?
Yes, it's, it's between five and eight years, but when you include crack seal, you can keep constantly staying on top of it, that's, in preserving it, we got to keep preserving the roads. If not, we're gonna, we're gonna start losing them, and then you're gonna see more of these, uh, full reconstruction projects that cost about three hundred thousand dollars per mile instead of a hundred and twenty-three again, you know? So chip and seals are beyond easiest, cheapest, we can, we do everything entirely in-house.
I think, and I, and I think it's, it's fair to say that most residents don't, don't see that as ideal to drive on, which we understand that. I mean, if we had our way, we would be blacktopping every single mile of county road we have.
I just, I just think they don't quite understand the whole process, and so you get some negative, uh, P R because people just don't realize that we're actually trying to preserve the roads, not...
Right, we...
They all forgot when they were gravelled.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we, uh, two years ago, if you all remember, uh, uh, we invested in the, the machines for us to be able to do this in-house, while, while other units of local government were literally, uh, passing will taxes, we did this instead. Uh, we took a more conservative approach to it, and that's, and this is the, the outcome of that. There, uh, we're, we're able to, you know, to address more roads...
Look at their...
With the chip and seal than we certainly would have ever been able to do with the blacktop. And we certainly weren't going to pass a tax in order for us to, to, uh, you know, to blacktop a few more roads.
Portis is a good place. With a real tax, anyway.
But also, at the end of the year, under the higher-traveled roads like Old Suma, we're gonna, if you guys have seen Expo Center, the parking lot's all black, that's fog seal, we did that at very minimal cost versus a contractor doing it. So we're gonna do that to some of the higher-traveled roads, the Two Hundred West from Two to Division, and Old Suma will get that, it'll look just like asphalt ultimately when we get done spraying it black.
The other thing is, Rich, and I think we forget, is the chip and seal's a pretty quick process, where a reconstruction could be a couple weeks in length, so I think there's a big advantage to just coming back and doing that. I don't particularly like it either, but I know that it does make the roads last longer and help process.
That's not to say we have, we've abandoned blacktopping roads, we have, but it'll be our most heavily traveled roads that get that attention first, so...
The Calumets, the Meridians, those are obviously, the rest of the Calumets on the list for this year, so those main nine rails and cars a year, or, or a day, roads are gonna get the...
As far as I'm concerned, you're doing a great job with what we have, so...
Absolutely.
And as far as schedule goes, are you on schedule or ahead, behind, or...
We're, we're about a month behind. We're halfway done, and we should be pretty much done. But on the chip and seal, like you said, it's fast, I just want to get this out there, is we grind it one day, we lay it out, we, we spray a dust lay on it, and then... is, we grind it one day, we lay it out, we, we spray a dust lay on it, and next morning we're coming back and putting the surface back on, unless it's a weekend, but we're trying not, we're trying to not open roads for the weekends, so they're not gravel for the weekend, try and get everything sealed up, so on Wednesday we start sealing everything up after we grind it, and Thursday you won't even know we're there, on, on Friday, so.
And we had a pretty wet spring, so.
Yeah.
On top of the COVID, while we weren't working.
Are you anything else for highway? All right, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Memorial Opera House, um, Indiana, what's that? Indiana Arts Commission Grant Fund, there's an additional $9,355.4 to contractual services. Reason, funding received for fiscal year 2020, 2021 to be used for operations will be working into the budget for 2021 session. There's another additional, I'm gonna keep going, COVID, um, looks like grant, additional $3,000 to other services. Reason, emergency funds received from AICIAC with funding from CARES Act.
I'll make a motion of both additionals.
There's two additionals here, and motion is second, any further discussion?
So we're talking about surplanting some funds for operations next year, what's the outlay right now, you should, what's, what's your next slide, Joe?
It's all very fluid, um, you know, it just really depends on the shifting data and all of that, I'd love to-
Do I need to return to the stage to bring it back around?
Yes, please.
Now, your funding, your funding is determined by his role.
Is it helps funding? Sure.
Only, that's, he's only one vote, you got six more.
Right, so I'll take all of you.
Have you looked at the, the fun, you know, the tickets when he's on stage, they really die down?
You know, we very consistently sell it out.
You know what he does, you don't tell him, but he buys them all.
It's money in the opera house, it's offering, and if he does that, it's okay.
So I'm sorry, so it's fluid, you know, at this point, we're kinda just waiting.
We're just waiting to see what the data does. I mean, I'm on roundtables every week with theaters across the nation that are in the exact same boat, nobody can really make a call, because it's just too soon.
I know Christmas is usually our big, our big to-do, and that's kind of here.
Yes, yeah.
So you're not gonna buy all the tickets this year?
Motion, it was right, I think a motion is second on additional, any further discussion? Scott, can we get a roll call, Adam O'Connor?
Counselor Spence.
Yes.
Counselor Whitten.
Yes.
Counselor Reba.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
And Counselor Packer.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
Scott, hang in there.
I will.
We're gonna get back to normal someday, and we're gonna, well, I don't know if we really ever want Dan back on stage.
Your show will go on, right? Thank you very much.
And we miss it badly.
We do too.
So, all right, stormwater, we have an additional Kino Bridge Fund, $500 to printing other supplies, um, stormwater, an additional $500 printing other, other than supplies.
Second.
Looks right, I mean, you guys doing the same thing, working together to buy some signs or something, $500 each to-
Correct, it's, uh, Commissioner's Office.
Commissioner's Office gave us a request that they wanted to see more signage out on our projects that we have out there, so.
All right, this wasn't to buy the, the new video screen down the hallway?
No.
All right. So, all right, there was, um, a motion is second, I believe?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We get a roll call, Adam O'Connor?
Counselor Whitten.
Yes.
Counselor Reba.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Larson.
Yes.
Counselor Packer.
Yes.
And Counselor Spence.
Yes. Well, I should know, I got about 30 miles over the weekend on my bike. Yes, straight east.
Top of the plan.
Uh-oh.
He enjoys riding.
I know, he's a bike rider. I'm not riding my bike to work yet, though.
I got 110 on my-
110 over the weekend? Jeez.
How big a motor you got on that?
Luxer bike.
Oh, it's a bicycle.
When do they sleep?
God, 110 miles over the weekend?
So, he's, he's a big leagues.
Yeah, no doubt. Looks like, um, grant fund, we got a Form 144 in front of us, up to $26 per hour PHNs, and up to $17 an hour for clericals. Reasons to create a Form 144 to pay salaries of the nurses and clerical out of this grant that started again on July 1st, 2021.
Motion is-
Second.
Motion is second on floor, discussion?
Is this the same, was, we're just continuing?
Yes, yes. The form just wasn't completed, I guess, previously.
And the pay's always been 26?
Yes.
And 17?
Any other questions? We get a roll call on the Form 144.
Counselor Reba.
Yes.
Counselor Graham.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Whitten.
Yes.
Counselor Packer.
Yes.
Counselor Spence.
Yes.
And Counselor Reba.
Yes. So, real quick, um, it would appear then we are taking the testing over COVID testing September 1st from the private contractor?
Yep, we are, the state ISDH offered up a grant for, for the Health Department to take it, and take it or leave it, and, uh, we, we decided that we've had enough problems with testing that we probably could handle it ourselves better, we're hoping anyway. So, uh, we are taking advantage of that grant, and our population is such that we are eligible for two sites, so we figured probably one in Valpo, one in Portage, one in North, and one in Central. We are looking for those sites, we're trying to establish those sites right now. Um, I think the state is kind of hoping that, you know, the community, it's gonna be a community effort, that maybe some of our sites will be donated, so, or very low cost, so, because we have, you see, from your letters, you all got the letter, okay, good. Um, and, uh, there is a, uh, there, the expectation that we will have those sites open 35 hours a week with some late evening hours and trying to accommodate, you know, those folks, uh, that they can't come during the day, and also some weekend hours or Saturday hours, so we have come up with a, a work schedule. We're hoping that not to use all the money on, uh, staffing, probably most of it will be staffing dollars or used for staffing, but we're hoping that maybe we can take some of our existing staff and have their work day be at that site, and, uh, to work in there, so we don't have to, you know, that would be what they're getting regular pay, but, um-
Are you anticipating hiring people?
Yes, we are.
You got a count?
We're hoping that, uh, no, we don't have a final count yet, because we haven't, we don't have a final count yet. Um, like I said, we're gonna try to supplement with our own, our existing staff already, but we're hoping that, you know, depending, we might have an ebb and flow of a number of people there, we, you know, it's, it's kind of a guesstimate right now, so we're hoping that, uh, um, like one clerical, and then two nurses maybe, and one of the nurses can help with clerical, or they can float, basically, and to have three on a site at, on, during the day. So, um, we're still kind of working on how much per hour those, you know, those that we hire will get. I know the Optum site don't hire anything less than an RN, they have RNs and physician's assistants, and there's practitioners, and, uh, you know, we were thinking, Dr. Stappus thinking maybe it would be possible to hire maybe an MA to help with the clerical and that kind of thing, and Optum didn't go with that, you know, with that, because the nurses, when people come in, and if they're symptomatic, you know, we have to do some triage, and we have to teach them. You gotta go home and stay there for 14 days, and you know, from the time, so it's a, it's an educational piece as well as a teaching, so it's not just setting them down and, you know, circling their nose with a Q-tip. But, uh, so, we're looking at all of that, Bob, and, uh, we're, I've got, I didn't get it all done, I apologize, like, you're just, we've been crazy busy these last few weeks, and, uh, but we've got it, we do have a plan, and, uh, um, everything kind of is, we're trying to get it in motion and get it in place. Uh, we have to turn it in on Friday to the state and, uh, let them, you know, let them take a look at it, so.
Are you assuming you're gonna hire part-time, you're not hiring full-time?
Yes, part-time, right, yeah, it'll all be part-time, right.
Do you guys, I mean, we've, we've seen a higher rate in Portage, and, um, there was some concern about where we were locating so that we could serve that community over there.
Right.
Is your specific sites that you're looking at, are they right near the court building, or are we, I mean, how close are we for them for convenience?
You know, we're, Portage is not just that, we, that's, you know, in your, in your letter, you probably say that, um, Portage site is to be announced, and, uh, we just got the Optum site, one that's, at the Armory now is moving up to Portage, and they're going to be using North Shore, very, very nicely, generously donated their, their Scottsdale Street site that they just moved out of. Now, that building is for sale, so hopefully Optum's gonna get there months through, but I don't know if that's gonna be available, if they would even allow us to use it. Even if they did, you know, it's still up for sale, so if a buyer came along and said, and it's vacant, so it can be moved into right away. So we would like to find something that's a little more permanent, so maybe we didn't have to pick up and, and move right away. So, something that they did find, and accessible for people, and, you know, has some parking, and, um, maybe, um, not steps that anybody in a wheelchair could come in and, and use that, or accessible anyway, so.
Is that the location effective Monday?
Yes.
That we're not sure if it's gonna be a longer-term-
Yeah, Optum will be there, the contracted site from ISDH, that company Optum serves, will be there for the month of August.
Okay, so that's clear.
And then September 1st is when we're supposed, we, the Health Department, is supposed to start taking over doing it.
Tony, what's, I mean, you may not be able to answer this now, but what's the timeframe right now? How much longer are they anticipating this to go on? You're gonna have a site, I'm saying, a year, six months?
They said 21, didn't they?
You, you know, that's-
June of 21?
Yeah, this, this particular grant, Dan, and this is not the answer to your question, I know, but this particular grant is September 1st through June 30th. Now, we all hope that it is well-done by them, well-done, but I don't know. If you look back at the other pandemics, they had some waves, so, you know, we're kind of anticipating that, and, uh, you know, we don't know how many waves there will be. So, uh, um, that's a, that's a good question, and I don't, don't have a good answer for that right now.
I got a silly question. We're gonna do the collecting.
Yes.
Who does the testing? Who actually tests it?
This, this, okay, we do the collecting, they have a courier, and actually goes, they have a set lab, ISDH is working with, they will contract with labs.
Okay, so we don't have to, we don't have to do what-
We don't have to do that, no, no, we do not have to do.
I noticed on your, on your letter, you had refrigerators and ice, I'm assuming for collection, the samples?
Yes, yes.
Do you need-
For the viral medium that the swabs go into, yes.
Do you need, uh, permanent power? I mean, a backup generator's part of this discussion?
Uh-
You lose power on a Saturday night when nobody's there?
You know, and-
I'm just making a statement, I'm just, I seen, when you talked about refrigerators and freezers.
You know, and we do have, the state really, from what they've listed, really, there are some attachments, if you all want to see them, but they do have a list of things they will supply. A backup generator's not one of those, but they really are very generous in, in supplying all our supplies, all the viral medium, all the swabs, all the PPE that we need, and, uh, refrigerators, and even the fridge freezers are, are little, uh, they look like the size of a cooler, but they're actually have a compressor on them, uh, like a, a freezer. So, but they're very generous, uh, I didn't think about that, Bob, that's a good question.
Well, I just, I mean, I assume refrigeration.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. Are you gonna continue with the nasal? Is that what you're using? Yes, now, they don't have to be nasal, they're long ones that you stick way, way back, they can be just, uh, some of the ones that we're going to be using probably are just nasal, so you could just do the nostrils and not all the way back, so.
Can you speak to some of the inefficiencies and efficiencies we're gonna gain because we're taking this on? Is there some effective, uh, 'cause I know some people have had complaints in the past, so is there some things we're gonna address that are gonna be much different that we're doing than we're doing?
You know, I, I think that you can, you can manage, you know, we, you know, this is kind of what we've done, we know how to do this, and, uh, um, since it's gonna be some of our staff, we can kind of see any kind of pitfalls or problems and evaluate those and, and fix them, you know, those issues.
I was thinking also consistency, that was probably where we fell down before, and I just wanted to make sure that was something we addressed.
Speaking of consistency, what, do we know, you may not, with the labs, if you don't know the exact lab turnaround time on these tests?
Uh, and currently, they are, um, three days from, from Optum. Now, I'm hoping that they're maybe using the same labs, so we haven't seen a list of lab sites.
And every one of our policies aligns with that, like, we're gonna have these people quarantined during the results, and we're, I mean, there's things that we're doing.
Yeah, and that's some of the teaching that the nurses do when they, they come through the line, and we do anticipate that we're supposed to allow anyone, whether they're symptomatic or don't have any symptoms, they, they can come one, come all, so we have to be real careful in how we set up, but we, those are the kind of people that we, we ask them about, why are you coming? You know, were, were you exposed? You know, is there somebody, you know, that you're, that's a close contact, and, and give them the, like, the timeframe, you need to be home isolated for X amount of days, and, you know, any kind of questions they have as well.
There's some, there's some question on that 14-day period, are we still looking at that 14 days as standard, or is there-
Yes, if you are, if you're looking at an exposure to a close contact, 14 days, because it takes sometimes up to 14 days to, to get symptoms from it. So we are looking at that now, if you've had symptoms, this gets really confusing, but if you have symptoms, you can actually start with that first day symptom and be 10 days out, and then you can be released.
Just balled all over you.
So.
I'd like to turn in, Sam.
I'm mad, please.
Will you guys be doing contact tracing? Will that come back to us?
The, the state is still doing, they have their, their contracted individuals, but it really has never left us totally off the hook, because we can look on, they have a, a computer program, we look up the people that they have in Porter County that they have contacted, some of them say lost the follow-up, because they can't get a hold of them, or some of those people were, uh, say, in the nursing home, and they have their, their home address, that they've been in the nursing home for three years now, and maybe that person is in the nursing home, maybe they're dead, maybe they passed away, and, so we go through, and we look at the gaps, that, you know, the information that's put into the computer, in this program, we look at the gaps, and then we're making calls still, so we've never really stopped.
Thank, thank you for that presentation.
Here's a quick question, if, okay, schools, say, school starts, it's still questionable.
Yep. Yep.
If someone in school tests positive.
Yep.
Is it easier to take the testing to the school and, like, have it, you know, 'cause I mean, kids may be exposed to thirty, forty, fifty other kids. Has there been any thought about, if that happens, take the testing to that particular place, as opposed to taking all those people, saying, go to the Portage site or the Valpo site?
You know, very good question, Greg, but, you know, we're, we're hoping that, you know, the, the superintendents are going to cohort their classes, they're gonna keep a pod of kids, you know, all together with particular teachers. Easier to do in elementary schools than it is in a middle school or high school, because they're all passing. It depends on, you know, and we also look at close contact group, that, you know, you look at, they're, they're all looking at seating charts, and look, looking who is right around that, that child that becomes positive.
Oh, but then when you add in lunch and stuff, that throws it off the window.
I know, I know. You know, there are so many, yes, there are so many details that, you know, you're.
I, I just didn't know if that was a contingent of, oh, if we have to go to a school, this is how we'll do it.
I know.
Or a big facility.
On a contingent, by the contingent.
We both on this stuff?
Yes.
Yes, we are, yeah.
Will we do it? You wanna pull this?
I thought, didn't we vote on it, House Department?
Yes.
Yeah, we voted on it.
We did.
Connie, Connie, one, one last question I have, would be, I don't know if you have the answer to it or not, but on the daily reporting, it talks about the long-term health facilities and so forth.
Yes.
Now, those numbers have not changed.
They're doing good, right now.
So they, not one new positive, not one new hospitalization.
They're doing good.
Over the course of several weeks, even in that most vulnerable.
Yes, they're doing good, because they have, they've, you know, locked out the public and guests, and they're very careful about their staff and, and even vendors, you know, coming in, but they're.
Do you got plenty of PPE and?
Yes, and PPE is, you know, I think everybody even kind of, is kind of trying to stockpile right now.
Okay.
In anticipation of that second wave.
That information, that's, that's.
We've been at forty deaths now, right? We're at thirty-nine for about fifteen.
Yes, well, we were at thirty-seven for weeks and weeks, and then we had the two more that were added then, were from nursing homes, two from nursing homes, and then we just went up to forty, not that long ago, but we've been holding pretty steady in hospitalization.
Great job by the county.
Basically have been very low, even though our kids count has kind of gone up, so.
And the jail has still been in good shape?
Yes, I believe so, I think talking to Sheriff earlier, I think zero right now, right?
Well, we're looking forward to you guys taking that over, 'cause there's been some issues.
Okay.
Keep up the good work.
All right.
We'll try. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Have a good evening.
Adult probation, pretrial service is fine, there's a reduction, twenty-four thousand six hundred eighteen dollars of salaries, salaries, reason, reducing the amount in the pretrial service fund by two thousand three hundred, two thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars per day for eleven pays that are remaining in twenty twenty.
Want to address these individually, or?
Whatever you guys wanna do, there's a Form 144 also.
Is all this stuff tied together?
Yes. Yes, it is all tied together. So essentially what it is, is Porter County's pretrial program did receive grant money in the amount of a little over two hundred thousand dollars, so we're asking to appropriate those dollars, some of which are for salaries. Those salaries looked like they were gonna be taken out of other funds, so you're gonna see a reduction in the other fund, and then you'll see the appropriation of that grant money, so we could pay the salaries out of the grant fund.
So there's no increase in salaries?
Thank you.
No increase in salaries.
A motion.
I'll make a motion and approve all these.
Second. I'll second. Ever in from both funds, from the pretrial service?
Nobody's getting a raise.
Any corrections, pretrial service, grant fund? So, there's a reduction in 144, then there's some additionals, there's, what, four or five additionals, and another Form 144? This all has to do with the grant and paying out of the different funds than just shifting the payment itself.
Correct.
All right, so there's, there's a motion in the second for the reduction for the Form 144, for the additional, 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 and the Form 144. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call on all of that, Vicki?
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Capra.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Witten.
I'm sorry, I was distracted, I counted the pop-up.
I wasn't saying anything.
Councilmember Reeder.
Yes. So just so you all know, the county is instituting a new Witten protection program for things like that, well, we got you, Dan.
And a comedy.
Put your mask on.
All right, thank you.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
I sort of like him sitting on the end, I mean, that's, it's more, it's appropriate.
I love Sheriff.
Nobody puts Witten in the corner.
Nobody puts baby.
Sheriff for the mask.
Sheriff, general fund, we got a transfer, five thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars from equipment, other than vehicles, to uniforms and clothes, five new officers' body armor, one thousand one hundred eleven dollars.
Make the motion.
There's a motion on the transfer, a second, any further discussion on the body armor? Seeing none, all in favor for the transfer, signify by saying aye. Aye, 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 same sign, transfer passes. Accident report fund, there's additional, thirty thousand dollars, motor veh, to motor vehicles.
Motion.
To help cover the cost to additional hybrid vehicles, motion in the second, any further discussion? Any additional, we got a roll call?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Capra.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeder.
Yes.
And Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
All right, jail, general fund, a transfer, one thousand one hundred eleven dollars from food and groceries to uniform and clothing, jail officer overlooked at last order. What's he been wearing?
Nothing.
That's all we've been keeping the COVID.
Jail empty, I know.
Nobody goes near it.
Oh, boy, so, there's a transfer, that, and you wanna keep going, there's another transfer, Public Safety Data Tech Fund, fifteen thousand seven hundred six dollars from telephone to consultants to cover costs of support implementation for Lexi Poehl, I don't know if I said it right, ISA will cover the, cover twelve thousand five dollars for the annual subscription, only one year needed.
I'll make a motion on the two transfers.
There's a motion on two transfers, a second, any further discussion on the two transfers? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those two transfers pass. Immate processing fund, there's a transfer, thirty-one thousand five hundred from contractual services salaries.
Motion.
There's.
Second.
Twenty-four, ten, and three thousand five hundred, twenty-eight. Reason to cover hazard pay for sixty-three jailers. There's a transfer, you guys want me to add the 144, zero to five hundred jail officers?
I'll amend my motion to include the 144.
Second concurs.
To amend, there's a motion in the second to amend to include the 144, which is moving from zero to five hundred jail officers, sixty-three of them, for hazard pay. So, there's a transfer and a 144 on the floor, motion in the second, discussion?
Did they all recover? Did we have any get it, Sheriff? We had some, did we have some? Fourth, they all recovered?
Yep, they're fine, they're back.
All right, we get a roll call on the transfer and 144, since there's a 144.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Capra.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
All right, garage, garage general fund.
Motion.
There's a motion on the, forty-one hundred thirty-nine dollars fifty cents, small tools, motion in the second. Cash received from scrap metal, sold from cleaning out, so this is just putting it in the fund.
Yes.
So, motion in the second, any further discussion on the additional? This is not an additional, I mean, out, this is just money that they put in, now they're putting it in the fund. So, we get a roll call, there's no further discussion?
Councilmember Capra.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Thursday. Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, good.
The assessor, John Snyder, general fund, whoa, transfer, six thousand dollars, this is prescription, contractual services, to contractual services, needed to pay for website maintenance and.
I'll make a motion to approve both of his transfer requests.
General fund and a reassessment transfer, six thousand on one, forty-eight hundred and two thousand on the other two. Any further discussion, any discussions?
Somebody seconded that?
Yes.
Motion in a second, you did, Bob.
I didn't.
Motion by Witten, second by the mayor of Valpo.
Did they raise, did they raise the price of the maintenance fee?
The maintenance fee for?
Well, the website maintenance and update, six thousand bucks, you need more?
No, no, it's not a maintenance fee, we have online appeals, and we're glad that we had them set up before COVID happened, but we set online appeals up about eight years ago, and the system that we have is wearing down, it needs some updates, because things have modernized and we haven't, so we're just.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is that why you do this outside of the county web, website, I mean?
We, we developed this before we came onto the county's network per se, so this has been something that we were allowed to keep, yes, so that, the answer is yes. It was developed before that transfer.
Chuck, Chuck Miller helping with this?
Are you gonna get a TV outside of your office also?
I want one in my office.
The one where I would take a tour down the, the east wing and see a television screen in the hallway with.
The Chuck Miller Show.
So, there's a motion in the second on the floor for the two transfers, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Hey, John, can I ask you one favor?
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of calls in Liberty Township about some younger people that were out measuring properties.
Yes, sir.
And there was no visible signage, I think, is there a possibility we could maybe mark their vehicle or something? I know, well, they had a shirt, but they were walking the yards without knocking, and then there was a couple homes where they had beat on the door, the individual heard them in the shower, so they must have pounded on the door quite heavily and startled some people, so I just wondered if we could maybe do a better job of either publishing where we are, if that was done, or, or something, just so that they know.
Yeah.
They're gonna be in those neighborhoods at that time.
I gotta, I got, I noticed that, when I was in the garage, I noticed a pair of them came in, and one had the green shirt on.
Yes.
The other one was unmarked.
Right.
So, one of the employees of the car?
The employee, I didn't see the car.
I just thought if we had some magnetic signs or something, we could throw on the cars, or at least notify that, you know, hey, we're gonna be doing this two-mile block area with the, you know, the set was gonna be out doing, at least we would, you know, expect, because during COVID, I mean, people were already freaked out, all this stuff going on, and then when you throw that into the mix, it, it kind of alarms people, so I was just kind of curious if there's something we could do to maybe just let them know ahead of time we'll be there.
We used to buy magnets, they blow off.
Yeah.
So magnets, they last for a couple of weeks, so we stopped buying them. You know, one of the other issues is that we have one marked car for the assessor's office, and we have eight teams out right now, and they, they use their own cars, which is kind of a pain for everybody involved, but we've talked about that before, you know, obviously we're not gonna get a.
Well, I think the minimum is, minimum is they should have at least T-shirts.
All of them.
No, they didn't have today.
Wish we knew who that was, but, yeah, we do. Oh, okay, all right, well then, well, we're, that's why we have those bright shirts.
You know, you come in my backyard with a dog, you're on your own, you know, that's, that's where, I've had, I gotta be honest, I've had people yicking me pretty hard about, you know.
We don't like government revenue or state.
We still don't either. The problem is, they do move out, I mean, the one, the one instance, luckily the guy had the dog inside the house, he said, 'cause they came through the gate.
It was just a.
And, that was a couple of years ago, but, you know, you come to somebody's backyard with a gate, and they get, you know.
I just, I just want to protect our people.
Yeah.
And I think that's the issue, is that, when you're, when I, when you start getting phone calls, obviously somebody's concerned, there's people in the neighborhood or whatever, and we just wanna know, you know, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, yeah. John, the one thing with the magnets, it's possible that they just keep the magnets in their trunk until they arrive, and then put it on, so this way they won't blow off, if they remember to put them on and take them off, but, yeah, certainly rate it like, yeah.
I, I got them on my trucks, and all you gotta do is hold your hand outside the door, okay, just go down the road, it'll stay on.
One person running, that's the whole car.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, we'll put one on the other side.
We'll figure out something, okay. We get some, maybe we get some, if the sheriff was here, we get some red and blues on the cars and.
Yeah, we could.
All right, you're not getting license cards.
Yeah?
All right, so, three cars.
Thank you, John.
That's organized, John, thank you.
T-shirts.
We're asking just to determine if now that's the state is appropriating more money than was appropriating the, 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 the,